She'll be sixteen in a couple of months.
Is it like you've been here in high school?
The meeting will now come to order. We are holding the February meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees Monthly Business Meeting. We welcome everyone that's here on a cold, wintry night and we'll get started here by having the Pledge of Allegiance that we've joined.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kirshner. Any discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, any patron comments on agenda items? Okay, moving on, then we move to the consent agenda. Within the consent agenda is the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of one of January 12th, 2016, and the executive meeting of January 12th, 2016. The personnel report, which contained retirements, resignations, leave of absence, et cetera. The approval of January 2016 claims number 41791 through number 42075. The financial expenditure goals. The annual list of outstanding checks more than two years old. The conflict of interest. And donations, which include a donation of $845 from the East Central Indiana Board of Realtors for CHS Food Pantry. A donation to WCC of a welding inspection kit from Randall Redker valued at $228. A $1,000 donation to the WCC in memory of Joe Connell. A donation of scrap steel from Contract Industrial Tooling valued at $250 for WCC. Okay, that is all of the items in the consent agenda. What is your pleasure, Board?
Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Did you? Okay, thanks, Ms. Hilton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, next, moving into the action items, we have the personnel report. Dr. Bayer?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, members of the board. We have four persons for your consideration this evening. First off, Horton Graves as an educational assistant at Conestelle High School, also Bobby Huber, also an educational assistant at high school. Two extracurricular coaching positions, both at track and both at the middle school, like Bird, a teacher there, and also Ron Paxton, who's a teacher at the high school, both serving in those capacities with your approval. In addition, the state performance grant stipend for certified administrative staff following the determination and clarification of the state performance funds. Fayette County School Corporation is now able to provide stipends to all the certified staff that were employed during the 1415 school year. Were here 120 days or more employed and remain employed as of December 15th, 2015. The recipient of these funds must have also been evaluated as highly effective or effective in order to receive the stipend. The highly effective performer will receive $385 and those rated as effective will receive $384, this latest number that Janie has provided for me. That number seems to be changing quite frequently and she's trying to get a final handle on it.
I got an email from the state doing us the new number.
The new number, so.
Three, four of them now.
Yeah, so it's exchanged.
There you go.
Somewhere they have a final number, but we will hopefully have that final number because the distribution of those funds to all certified staff that are eligible to receive them would be at the February 29th, 2016 pay. And that's what I have for your action tonight, Mr. Burchett.
Just a word of explanation. Part of the reason that number changes is there is a fixed number that the state is going to distribute. I believe it's $30 million.
$30 million.
And as people call and ask questions and ask them and challenge, the calculations that they have, some dollars shift. And I've talked to the gentleman down there a couple of times, wanted some clarification as to why our numbers were calculated, they were. He has shared with me that there have been some school corporations that have changed. So that's the reason there's been. But he did say Friday they would be issuing that distribution, so I guess after Friday it's too late to appeal.
Nice to get that in your hands. The teachers have been asking. We've had in communication with our Federation President, Matt Butcher, and so we've kept them in a loop all the way along, so it's been a good conversation. I know they're anxious and now we can finally deliver on something that we'd like to get to them.
This is in addition to the local component for the stipend piece, that we've had to wait and wait and wait for the ISDA scores to be able to finalize, the principals to be able to finalize the evaluations. So there'll be two components of additional pay that will be going in that February 29th.
This was the money that we would hope would have gotten to them before Christmas time, before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think the requirement is we have 20 business days after we're received it, but the expectation is that would have been distributed before December 15th. But we're still waiting on the final, final word from the state.
Yeah, the state was supposed to distribute it by December 5th, I think, and we were to have distributed by December 31st, but because of the mass of the testing scores this year, it cannot meet that timeline.
Okay.
Dr. Bayer, were the participants all amicable to what we ended up with for the determination for the dispersed number?
Well, we didn't have the actual amount. We kind of hinted around what it could be. We've kind of shared a ballpark figure and we'll follow it. Actually, I have a memo that will go out to all teachers that will know exactly what that amount will be, so that's going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
But they understood.
They did.
How we were going to handle that.
Yes, explained that and had discussion with the Federation President, and she had discussion with her executive council. So it's been communicated throughout the teachers' ranks, so they're aware of what's going on.
All right.
The requirements require difference before highly effective and effective teachers, but they don't say what that difference has to be. So for the least divisive position, we added $1 to the highly effective over the amount for the effective.
You're much supportive of that, too, as well? Okay? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bayer. I need a motion to accept the personnel report.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Hilton, second. All right, any discussion, further discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we have the recommendation of bus purchases. Dr. Bayer?
Thank you again, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, and members of the board. Jane Oakley has sent to me and we passed along to you in your packet the recommendation for bus purchases following a review. She is respectfully requesting the purchase of four 66-passenger IC school buses totaling amount of $319,882.20. That includes support, or excuse me, trade-in value of four buses that were submitted in 2005, four 2005 buses, 66 passengers as well. This amount is well within the bus replacement allocation and appropriation, so she's good there. And she's also asking, requesting the permission to make payment at the time of delivery upon the inspection. These have to be approved by state police and inspection prior to us paying for them and all vehicles being delivered. So we would like your support of that as well. And Jane, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add on that? I think we've covered. We've not talked about it several times, so I think we're.
She's good, and if you're good, we're good, so.
Okay. You hear this recommendation of the bus purchases? I need a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Education Hall of Fame Selection Committee, Dr. Hodges.
What in your packet was very well written, Miranda, asking that you would affirm the appointment of Jacob Gross, a parent to the Hall of Fame Committee, patron of Deborah Redmond, and teacher Ann Stanley, for two-year terms to join Mr. Burchett and myself on the Hall of Fame selection. Recommendation is you approve that group.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to recommend this group?
I shall move.
Thank you, Ms. Kirshner. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Recommendation of a new course at Conestelle High School, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett, Dr. Hodges, and board. Last month, we proposed the course change and it's the addition of an advanced business course, BUSN 105. There are no financial requirements, no staff changes, and no additional certification needed by staff, and it will not impact any other courses. Mr. Burchett, you had inquired last month at the meeting about the difference in credits. This class will initially be offered as a one-hour class for one semester and students will earn three hours of credit through IB Tech. And the additional credit option will come into play if the students were enrolled in an internship related to the advanced business management class for one hour per day. So that's the difference in the credit hours there.
Okay, thank you for that info. All right, you've heard this recommendation. What's your pleasure?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Ms. Savoy? Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Further questions, anyone? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Okay, updates for the Indiana Code Compliance, Ms. Pollitt.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. The legislature this year implemented some new legislation related to establishing materiality thresholds for reporting variances in cash and for property that might be misappropriated or missing. And in addition to that, they are requiring the establishment of bonding thresholds for those who handle money. Additionally, there's a third item related to internal controls that we'll be addressing in a later point, but I wanted to let you know it's coming. The State Board of Accounts is working on some additional guidance related to the training requirement for that piece. So before you this evening, there are two resolutions. The first one to establish a materiality threshold for reporting the discrepancies of missing cash or property. The cash amount would be $500 or more, or property of $2,000 or more. Failure to establish a threshold would then require that even if we had a cash shortage at the checkout line at Maplewood's Cafeteria of 10 cents, we would have to be reporting that. So all local governments are having to establish these materiality thresholds. We're not talking about clerical errors. We're talking about property or funds that would come up missing, so.
Did they not give you a recommendation?
Well, they did not, so I went out and did some research and the Indiana Association of Counties, I believe it is, and the Township Trustees Groups are using a threshold of $500 for cash and $2,000 for property seem to be the norm. So that's how I prepared our resolution related to that.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
That's all right. And then for the bonding resolution, I've prepared that in accordance with what our current bonding amounts that have been established, which for myself as treasurer is $50,000. It is also $50,000 for your deputy treasurer, Debbie Jobe. And then we use a blanket insurance policy that covers all other individuals who might handle cash, and that would be $30,000 per occurrence. I'm recommending your approval of these two resolutions this evening with the understanding that we will be addressing internal controls at another date.
Okay, you've heard this report for these two resolutions. What is the pleasure of the board?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve those resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Burchett. Second motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Any further discussion or questions?
Just hold on. Did you also do a similar survey to determine your amount for the $2,000 threshold?
When I did that, people, those associations for those other groups have made the recommendation for cash and for.
Property.
And property.
Okay.
The school business officials have not made any recommendation yet.
We haven't been required to do it.
Yeah, so I think we're on the front end of getting these resolutions completed, but I think those amounts are well within reason.
All right, thank you, Janie.
Have we had a problem with this, with disappearing cash and property, or?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, we have cash short and cash long.
Yeah.
At concessions, we have cash short and cash long at the cafeteria.
That's going to happen.
It does, yeah.
But as far as any real issues with purposeful discrepancies?
No, but absent this, even those occurrences that would be in the normal course of business where somebody might be missing and dying for their popcorn at the concessions and you just say, oh, go ahead, and then the person forgets to put it in. Every instance of that would be required to be reported to the State Board of Accounts, or any shortage as students go through the line. So you need a materiality threshold to not be inundating them with the shortages, but no. The internal control piece that we'll be addressing, we already at the corporation level practice good internal controls, and we have to answer a questionnaire every other year when the Board of Accounts comes in about those internal controls. Your greater exposures are at your extracurriculars where you have one person who writes the chat, one person who touches the cash, and so they want you to develop these internal control policies in an education program for those individuals who deal with the cash of those groups, and the board formally approve that to build in procedures that would catch potential money or property missing. So that's sort of the next step of this process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are you ready to vote, anyone? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Permission to advertise for the 2016 summer projects. Ms. Pollitt, again.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. It's relatively short list this year compared to previous years. We have some, we have a chiller at Eastview. We have two HVAC rooftop units at the high school. We are going, if this is approved, we are going to advertise those separately and take those bids on a shorter timeline. We need to get those units replaced, hopefully before the warm season starts, so maybe over spring break or shortly thereafter. We have some asphalt sealing at Grand View, Spartan Drive, and the Methodist Church parking lot that we, our staff uses to park in. Part of our agreement with them includes us sealing that for the use of that facility. And awning at the front entrance of Eastview. And then concrete land improvements. We need a small dumpster pad out at Fayette Central. We're going to do some work on CMS sidewalks, Eastview sidewalks, and Everton's curb and sidewalk out front. All of these projects were a part of the capital projects plan that was approved. In addition to these, we'll be taking competitive quotes for carpeting and tile and interior doors, but those are kind of specific in keeping with what we've already done in those buildings, so we competitively quote those, but those, in addition to these, will be brought to you for approval before we proceed with anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you've heard this report, which is a permission to advertise for our 2016 summer projects. What's your pleasure, Board?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Savoy? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Now we have public law 221 school improvement plans, 2015 through 2018. Mr. Collins?
Mr. Burchett, these are a few months late. Normally, this happens in the fall, however, due to the delay in getting our ISDA data, we had to delay this until this month. So our buildings have all met with their school improvement committees. Take note, they have been working on the various strategies and areas of focus throughout the year, however, this requirement is that we submit these plans by March 1st. It's part of the accreditation with the state, and then it covers the legal standard one with that. So in your package, you have the executive summaries of those, and if you don't have any questions, I ask that you approve those plans as submitted, and they will then be submitted to the state in the next two weeks.
Okay, you've heard this presentation. I'm reading through, you have a committee of teachers and principals.
Each building.
Parents, or anybody else become involved in this?
There's a parent aspect as well with that. There are certain requirements for each building as far as the committing members, so it's made up of all the different stakeholders.
Okay.
And each building does place that group in their plan, and those plans will be on record here and then on the school websites as well, once approved.
Okay, any questions or concerns? You've had your reading material, if you want to go through it, so. Do I hear a motion to accept these improvement plans?
I move to accept the improvement plans.
Thank you. Mr. Hilton, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. Then we have a recommendation for upgrading our network infrastructure eligible for category two E-rate funding. Mr. Collins?
Yes, and I will call Mr. Miller, our technology director, up. He will explain more of this, but the E-rate funding is tied to our free-reduced college numbers, and we anticipate 80% funding level. There are some much-needed updating pieces and infrastructure pieces that we do need to make to maintain capacity in our building, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller to explain some of those.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you, Mr. President, board members, and Dr. Hodges. E-rate, since its inception in 1997, the E-rate program has helped ensure that eligible schools and libraries have affordable access to the Internet. In 2004, there was a modernization of the E-rate program, and it sought to ensure that E-rate is geared towards meeting broadband needs in schools in today's interactive and individualized digital learning. Specifically, the request before you is for E-rate category two eligible services, which are focused on network connectivity within the school buildings. The E-rate category two budgets are based on September's count day enrollment. The pre-discount budget is assigned to individual buildings at $150 per student and can fluctuate from year to year. Based on the corporation's free and reduced launch participation, the corporation qualifies for an 80% discount of products and services in the E-rate category two services. The pre-discount budget is a five-year budget, but can't be spent all at once or in smaller amounts over the five years. Our interest with declining enrollment is to take advantage of it in one year, so we don't have a loss of that $150 for every student that is not returning in the school year. This past December, the board approved advertising for response for proposals. As a result of that advertising, we received two RFPs or bids. The cost difference between the two proposals was approximately $177,000. Using the evaluation criteria in your board package, you'll see that our choice is to work with Bell Tech Logics, and I respectfully request the board approve moving forward with the network infrastructure upgrades, utilizing the products and services available through Bell Tech Logics. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Do any of you have any questions or concerns regarding this?
How much is this going to cost us? We get an 80% discount, so the money is obviously worth it. It's a really good program. Just out of curiosity, about how much money is this going to cost us?
The total was made available in your packet, I believe. The total of the infrastructure upgrades was $572,000. We will receive discount or funding from the USAC or FCC or the E-rate program, $420,000 of that $572,000. So the net being $161,000 that the corporation is going to be responsible for, which encompasses have been made, and also part of, these upgrades are part of our capital projects anyway, so rather than that $572,000 given our capital projects budget means it would take over 11 years for us to do it. And by the time we got to the 11th year, well, let's say, by the time we got to the third year, whatever we've done is going to be obsolete. So this is an opportunity to address the infrastructure needs that we have.
We did make provision in carryover of the rainy day fund to accommodate $106,000 of this. There is an additional $14,520 related to the CMS Spartan Bowl that we'll be making a determination on the need or the, including that component as we go along with the middle school project, so.
The same result, that amount of money.
Well, yeah, and it just works better. We will hopefully, this program will hopefully keep us from having as many issues as we have with our standardized testing and doing those things also correct through using our Internet services.
We have ever-increasing devices within our school buildings as we continue to support technology as a complement to instruction and learning, so it's certainly in anticipation or in preparation for those demands.
Good.
Just for clarification's sake, the issues we had with CTP Memorial Hill on the assessment was on their end.
That is correct.
Not our issue.
And if you saw the most recent news story, the Pearson test that took place in January, Pearson also points that the problems were on their end.
And they were caught on our end. The, one of our tech people identified the problem and got it corrected.
Great preparation.
Yeah.
And then Terry stuff.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Miller's recommendation. What is your pleasure, Board?
I'll make one.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kirshner. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that completes our action items. Now we move into our discussion items. State of the School, Dr. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board, you should have somewhere at your table the PowerPoint that I planned to do this evening. One of the things that I obsess with when I make a presentation is the background. If I turn the mouse the right way up, it will go better instead of backwards. And as I was looking at various templates, I found this one, and I thought it was, for this presentation, I thought it was really appropriate, because as we talk about the shape the school corporation is, the state of the school, there are a lot of hands that have gone to form what I'm going to report to you tonight. This is not my report. I just have the privilege of sharing with you what's been happening within our schools. And I will preface this as we go forward. There are some really great things that we want to celebrate. There are some challenges that have been brought about by some changes the state has imposed upon us, but we'll talk about those things as we go through. As I've been doing state-of-the-school presentations, I always like to talk about who we are. And the charts are too small to read the numbers. And my point in sharing these is not to look necessarily at the numbers, but look at trends and see where we've been and see where we're going. This is ADM, Aggregate Daily Membership. And if you look there on the last two, it looks like 2015 has stopped the drop in decline in enrollment that we've been experiencing, but you have to look behind the scenes. ADM, up until this year, counted kindergarten students as one-half. This year's kindergarten students count a full FTE. So our kindergarten enrollment is around 216. So just by the change in how we calculate ADM, we got a bump of about 108 kids just to start that. So we're still headed in a not-so-positive direction, but that's the way it is. We look at free and reduced price lunch. You can see that we've kind of held our own the last few years. The green bar down at the bottom is the reduced price, and if you look at that, that's grown just a little bit, but the overall, the overall for Fayette County School Corporation is 52.8 percent free, 9.6 percent reduced for a 62.4 percent free and reduced price lunch. If you're curious where the state is, the state is at 41 percent and 7.2 or 48.2 percent. So we're about 14 percent above the state average when it comes to free and reduced price lunch. Departmental reports, I like this part, because I think sometimes it's important for us to realize how big an organization this really is. In 2015, we issued 809 W-2s. We are the largest employer in Fayette County. I'm not sure that's a title that we would like to keep. Not that we want to reduce that number, but we would like for other business and industry within the community to surpass us in that. Just a word of reminder, that 809 includes everyone from the superintendent to someone who may have substituted once or twice, who may be working in extracurriculars. So it's anyone who has received a paycheck or a W-2 is counted at that 809. Total expenditures across all funds, over $40 million. We are a very large operation. Transportation, some of these numbers are kind of interesting. We transport over 2,300 kids on a daily basis. That's close to half a million kids annually. We drive 3,136 miles each day, and again, that's well over half a million miles. Our transportation department does a great job. We appreciate what they do, but there again, we probably operate the largest transportation operation in the county, but I can say with great certainty, we haul the most precious cargo that anyone hauls in this county. Meals served, you had a presentation from Chartwell's not too long ago, but we serve about a little over 4,400 meals daily. That's almost a million meals on an annual basis. And if you convert every meal that we serve in terms of milk, that's 52,866 gallons of milk, half pint at a time. Let's take a look at finances. As we talk about, as you're fully aware, our general fund revenue is driven by enrollment. That's been a change. The red bars that you see there, when we go back, there was a thing, if you may recall, several years ago called stimulus dollars. And the way the state of Indiana chose to use those stimulus dollars, they used those to offset what could have been viewed as an obligation to public schools. So we show how those bars fit. But using the concept that they say that the money follows the child, you can see with declining enrollment, we're in a declining revenue situation. This next graph could be a lot worse, but I think it shows a responsiveness to on our expenditures in general fund. As our revenue has been going down, we've been responsive in our expenditures. If that graph were even or going the other way, then we would be headed towards some real concerns, but as this is, we're making adjustments as we go along. Salary and fringe benefits, obviously, to use some terminology that I've heard used before, the biggest horse at the trough on that is salary and fringe benefits. If you look back in 2005, fringe benefits were about 15 percent of the overall expenditure. And you look back the last few years, it's 24 percent, I think, is what it says on that. So we're up. No, I thought I had written out that. What I wanted to tell you is usually when I present this, I tell you back when I was taking budget classes, they would tell you a healthy school budget would have salary and fringe benefits in the 80 percent range. And I always talk to you about that being a caution, trying to be a lifelong learner. We'll talk a little bit more about that later on. Talking to someone who's currently taking a finance class and talking to somebody who has much more experience in the area of finance than I, said really, in today's market, that range between 80 and 90 percent is probably more realistic. And so in that frame of reference, our budget looks a lot healthier than what I've shared with you in previous years, but I wanted to be accurate in my representation of that. Okay. I debated whether to show these graphs to you, because we've talked about many times, and even tonight, we talked a little bit about the challenges in state I-Step. But it is what it is, and I think we need to take a look at it. And as I wrote in my notes up here, if we're going to get better, we have to face the brutal facts. And so I'm not, a little disappointed in how these look, not unexpected, but there it is. You know, that's the history we have been. I've talked to you about how impressive that graph has been over the years. The one dip that you see before the large incline, that was when the state decided to move from our fall testing of I-Step to a spring testing of I-Step, and there was that implementation drop that we saw there, but we were building off that. But as you see, there again, for those in the audience that may not be familiar with these graphs, the red lines are always Fayette County School Corporation, the blue lines are always the state of Indiana. The good news in this graph is there's more blue at the bottom than there is red, so I can tell you for the ninth testing cycle in a row, at least in mathematics, we have exceeded the state average. Not by much. According to the latest number that I saw, we were at 61.6 and the state was at 61 percent. But hey, it's above the state average, so let's celebrate that. English, language arts, as you can see, that's had a lot more ups and downs than what the mathematics did, and unfortunately, there's more red at the bottom of that than there is blue, and that means that the state outperformed us. There again, not by much. The state's at 67.3 percent and we're at 66.2. And so when you factor that in across both, here's the past both, and again, there's a significant drop-off, and again, the red outpaces the blue. State average, 53.5, and we're at 52.1. If you're curious as to how many students are involved in just 1 percent, how many students would have taken us to beat state average, about 16 students equal 1 percent. So it's not much, but it's not where we want to be. And as we talked, in state-of-the-school, I've talked about this for several years. We knew there was going to be a drop-off when there was a change to go to college and career-ready assessments. We knew that. My hope was that we would still be able to outperform the state. We haven't done it. The good news is our people have already started working very hard and very diligently, and I do expect to see a rebound this spring when that happens. I'm going to talk about accountability, but before I do, and we've talked about the delay in I-Step, and that's a problem. This House Enrolled Act 1427, the General Assembly passed this, and they said not later than November the 15th, 2013, the State Board shall, shall, that means I got to do it, shall establish new categories or designations of school performance. November 15th, 2013. I looked at my calendar day, it's February 9th, 2016. What I'm going to show you is accountability is still using the old model that was supposed to replace in 2013. I will tell you, the State Board met last week. They were supposed to talk about a new model, give us an idea of what that's going to look like, and they've pushed that on down the road. I'm a little concerned, disappointed, while there have been some models put out there, and they say, here's what we're going to do. They haven't been able to give it to me in a format where I can take our data, plug it into that model, and see how that impacts us. To me, that seems like you ought to be doing that rather than just coming up with different models. Lot of conversation, don't know where it's going to end up. But what I'm going to show you accountability-wise, the General Assembly did pass a bill that held harmless on grades, so as we look at our accountability, you can see that our grades are the same as they were last year. Maybe not what you expect based on the graphs of the I-Step that we saw, but Eastview, Everton, Fayette Central, CMS, As; crazy, Grandview, Maplewood, CHS, Bs; and Fayette County School Corporation, an A. Let's talk about some things that are showing some positive growth. Students will read at grade level before they leave third grade. We've been doing that for about four years, and you can see that we started out that we were below the state average, and you can see that the last two testing cycles, we've been above the state average. And the good news is we are going in a positive direction. There's a positive trend there. So that's something we're very, very happy with. This next one, students will be competent in math standards before they leave fourth grade. This is a real concern. Last two years, we've been below the state average. There again, should come as no shock and surprise to you that the overall pass rate is down significantly, but you can see that we're about, well, the state passed with 65.2 and we're at 57. So there's a bigger drop-off there than what I would like to have seen in that area. I will tell you, this is the year for math adoption. I do know that we're piloting some different programs. Let me say, we've been using Everyday Math for a number of years. We were using Everyday Math in my previous school corporation. I think it's a good, solid program, but we're also looking at some other programs. I'll leave that up to Mr. Collins when he makes his recommendation. But we are piloting both programs within the schools. As I shared with you, I went to a portion of the grade level meetings. I certainly didn't stay for all of them all the way through, but I did hear some presentations from those folks that were piloting the math series. And I will tell you, the two that we're looking at are all receiving some very good marks, so hopefully we'll see some changes in that next year. Connersville High School will have a graduation rate that exceeds the state average and a dropout rate that is below the state average. This is good news, folks, 92.7. Also good news, normally when I present this, I have to give you, in arrears, what the graduation rate, this is class of 2015, 92.7, four years in a row, above the state average. That was a significant goal for us. When I came here as superintendent, that was something we wanted to see happen. We've done it four years in a row. And the better news is, three years, three out of four years, we've been above 90 percent. And so kudos to Randy and his staff for the work that they've done, and kudos to the board for your support of some of the extra measures that we put into to help our kids be successful as they go through. This one, still not a bad number, 5.3 percent dropout rate. That's not as good as the state average. We typically have beat the state average significantly. The state was at 4.6, but that's where we're at. Looking ahead.
Can we throw darts?
Four years ago, going around in the education community, it was anybody but Tony. You know, he was, during his time as State Superintendent of Public Instruction, we were trying to do too much too fast. Tony would, Tony did tell people, he didn't know if he'd get a second term, and so his goal was to push that ball as far down the field as he could before he left office. And we know that there were some issues with that. So we were thinking four years ago, if we make a change, it's got to get better, right? Well, here's what I think we have today. We have the Department of Ed that's heading one direction. We have State Board of Ed that isn't necessarily going the same direction, and I've listed it General Assembly kind of overall of it, but I could have just said political influences. Now subtle, maybe not so subtle, look who's driving the bus in I-DoE and look who's driving the bus in State Board of Ed. There's no one home. That's a problem. That's a problem. Not that some people haven't tried to take leadership, I just don't think they've been given the opportunity to provide the leadership. I'll save some of my comments for this slide. We are transitioning as a nation from No Child Left Behind to Every Student Success Act. And many people are excited, because when you look at the first part of it, it says that there's going to be more local control. The state is going to have more say in education than what they had under No Child Left Behind. I'm not sure that that's really good news, folks, here in Indiana, and I'll show a little bit more about that later. ESSA, get used to that phrase. I don't know, they may come up with a classy little NCLB, I've heard it called nickel B and other things, I'm not sure what ESSA will be. But it still contains a requirement that states assess math and English, English Language Arts in grades three through eight with an additional assessment in high school. It still says those results have to be reported to the public, and it still says there have to be growth measures tied to accountability. Now, during my 2014 State of Schools presentation, I told you our No Child Left Behind waiver called for Indiana to move away from I-Step. I also told you that we would only deal with I-Step for three more years. Well, that would have been 14, 15, and 16. Well, and the plan was that we would be transitioning to Park or to Smarter Balance, which were the more career and college-ready. Alive in the General Assembly, even as I speak, is House Bill 1395. Among other things, it's calling for a third independent party to review and re-score I-Step and puts a sunset on I-Step no later than July of 2017, which is outside of when the waiver said we'd move away with it. And it establishes a committee to make recommendations to the State Board, who will develop a system for measuring K-12 performance. The No Child Left Behind waiver was initiated by the Department of Ed. Now the General Assembly is saying, this is what you're going to do, and the State Board seems to have more responsibility. Senate Bill 63 also establishes a panel to study alternatives to the I-Step program and make recommendations of replacing I-Step. So if we go back to my previous slide, I'm not really sure who has the greater control or who's bearing the most weight. We'll have to see how that goes forward. I know last election, I believe it was the last election, there was a great deal of talk of significantly changing the role of the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, and so we'll just have to wait to see how that all works out. But there's a lot of concerns there with that. Circuit breaker impact, this is something we need to be aware of. This is a graph that as you move to the right, goes up that up, goes higher. What that means is that there is increasingly lost revenue that if it were not for the circuit breaker, property tax caps, that's revenue that we would have been generating. Couple comments I want to make on this. Here in Fayette County, as a homeowner, when I got my last tax statement, the value of my house decreased. That meant I didn't have to pay as much property tax. If you're concerned about the property taxpayer, that's good news. If you look at those entities that If you look at those entities that are dependent upon property tax dollars, that's not so much good news. I don't have good numbers on all of the houses that, that were torn down within Fayette County, but I can tell you, there was a grant where the city tore down about eight houses. I know there were two or three other houses that were torn down. We tore down in the county about the same number of houses that, that we have new permits to build houses. So we're tearing down almost what we're building new. And so that, that really isn't, to me, is not a real sign of growth. That's, that's a concern. Another piece about this is, if we believe in the spirit of local control, we ought to be in a position to determine how we're going to do with that million dollar plus loss in revenue. There's five taxing, five taxing funds that this deals with, Janie? We ought to be able to make the determination how we want to distribute that across the five taxing funds. Right now, we're restricted. If we lose 10% or more of our revenue through the circuit breaker, then we have a little bit more flexibility. Bill Alive in the General Assembly bumps it up to 20%. So what that is saying is, we will be told where and how to take those reductions in our circuit breaker loss. Accurate statement?
Only go to transportation and CPF.
Only transportation and CPF.
Right now, we have a resolution that allows us to spread it among all funds as a proportion of their levy.
I think a local school corporation knows their budget better than anybody else. And I think they ought to be the ones in the best position to make the decision on how they want to distribute that loss. Here's another number that I think you need to be aware of. Says utility cost. Give you a little bit of a history lesson. Back many, many years ago, when schools were faced with double-digit percentage increase in casualty insurance premiums and utility costs were spiraling out of control, schools approached the General Assembly and say, you have to give us some relief. You've got to find a way to try to help us. The amount of money that you're giving to us, and that was back when we had the term new, new money in general fund, but, but the allocation coming from the state needed to take into consideration that utility costs and insurance costs were out of control. Now, in talking to, at that point in time, I was, I was a friend with the person who was Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee, and, and he told me, he says, I, I don't understand how we can give a school corporation 2% new money and they turn around and give 4% increases to their teachers or some, some figure like that. We're giving you a certain percentage and you give away, it appears you give away that and more in salaries, and now you're saying you've got to have help with utilities. We've got to find a way to earmark that money so you use it for what you say you need to have it for. And so they created a situation within capital projects. It's an identified amount that we can generate a levy for and receive that money to pay for either utilities or for property and casualty insurance. We have chosen to use that in utility, doesn't cover all of our utilities costs, but that's a big help. That was never made a part of any long, ongoing, long-term legislation. Currently, the legislation calls for this to end. 17. There's new legislation that, that's out there that will kick it out to December 31st, but that does have a sunset provision. So what does that mean? That means $847,000 that you, we are right now spending for utilities out of capital projects will be an expense that goes to our general fund. That's, that's a concern going forward. The nice little trick about what the General Assembly did this, and they were in a, a frame of mind to do this quite frank, quite frequently, is they said, okay, you need the money, we'll find a way for you to levy the taxes to raise the money for you. So we can tell the folks, the state of Indiana didn't raise your taxes. If your taxes went up, you need to talk to your local people, because they're the ones doing it to you. And it's like, wait a minute, you've provided a vehicle to help us out and that's the only avenue that we have to do that is to raise a little tax. But that's, I digress a little bit. Last year, I showed you this graph, and it's, when we started talking about jumpstart and, and the need that our incoming kindergarten students had. When you look at the, the tail end of that right there again, we're red, the state's blue, you can see that we've stopped that decline just a bit. We talked about two weeks, it's not going to be a huge turnaround for kids, but it's going to help. Our first go-around, we serviced about half of the incoming kindergarten students. We didn't necessarily get all of those that we had targeted and hoped to get, but we plan to continue to build on that. But, but there again, it's, it's slowed the decline. When we look at math, the, the break there on the end is, is more noticeable than it is on the English Language Arts portion of that. I think going forward, what I would be interested in seeing, it's too early to do that, we do collect NWE data for first graders. I would like to see how these students, who are kindergarten students this year, fare when it comes to NWA next year, to see if there's a carryover from, from what we've, what we've done. The, the foundation was, was an absolute tremendous partnership for us, and they are still interested in continuing to provide funding for this, this program. And so we plan to continue that again, at least through this next summer. I don't know that I've grafted this for you in the past, I know I've talked to you about SAT scores, and, and a real concern there. We've tried to do some things to address that at the high school. We do have some SAT prep classes, but we're still not, when we think about our performance on other assessments going through, one would really expect this to look better. And so going forward, I would hope that we would see some improvement in SAT. We've broken it down, I think, I think you can get scores for the top 25% of, of your class and the, kind of the top 25 of SAT. Any way that you break out and break down SAT and look at it, we have, we have some, some significant room for improvement, in my opinion. In the back of the boardroom here, there's a plaque that, that comes from ISBA, the phraseology or similar to it, and it says, "And it shall be the responsibility of the school board member always to think in terms of children first." And throughout my time here, people have referred to that plaque at different times and have different interpretations of what that means about always thinking in terms of children first. And so as I thought about this, I thought, well, maybe we ought to take a look at our mission statement, and it's on the back of your nameplate, but, but essentially it says, and I've added, I've added the underline, and it says, "The mission of the Fayette County School Corporation is to provide quality educational programs in an environment which is safe, harmonious, and conducive to learning, enabling a diverse population of all ages to become independent, productive citizens, and lifelong learners." Two references in our mission statement in terms of learning. It's my emphasis. I thought for a long time, superintendents, superintendents get lots of labels and get called lots of things, and sometimes superintendents are referred to as CEOs, Chief Executive Officer, Chief Education Officer. But I think a title that, that would be, be very becoming of a superintendent is a CLL, the Chief Learning Leader, because that's really what it's all about, isn't it? The learning of our students. I know there was a point in time when we looked for, for administrators within corporations, I, I won't speak for, for Fayette County, but I will tell you other places that I've been, when we advertised, we look for instructional leadership. And that's really an important component. I tried to turn that around and say that we need to look at learning leadership. As you recall, when Dr. Clay retired, we changed the title of the Assistant Superintendent's role from Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Curriculum Instruction, that's an important piece, but changed, tried to have this little subtle shift to Assistant Superintendent in Charge of Learning, All Things Learning. And if you go back to the model, I've talked about a lot of times about how do you maximize student learning? We look at curriculum from five different directions or different areas. What's written? What's taught? What's learned? What's tested? And what's reported? You can teach a great lesson, you can provide all the information, but if it's not connecting with kids, have you really done a job? And that's the learning component. To me, that's, that's what's really important. Last year, I showed you this slide from Eric Hoffer. It says, "In times of change, learners inherit the earth while the learned find themselves beautifully equipped to deal with a world that no longer exists." We're in a world of change, that's what I talked about last year. We're in a world of change and we have to learn how to deal with it. I found this quote from Alvin Toffler, which I think expands on that just a little bit. It says, "The illiterate of the 21st century will not be those who cannot read and write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." We go back, I said I'd bring it up again, when we talked about what's a healthy budget look like, 80% salary-in-fringe benefits. That was my training. That's what we said, that was a target you need to shoot for. That doesn't work in today's market. It needs to be something else. That's a small piece. But I think that we, we have to be careful that we don't get entrenched in the way things always have been, because there's so much change going on, we won't be able to keep up with that. Roland Barth, I love Roland Barth, especially when it comes to talking about learning. A book that, that I've marked up and earmarked everything, it's Learning by Heart by Roland Barth. He says, "A powerful relationship exists between learning and leading." Learning and leading. Here's what John Maxwell says. Leaders are learners. If you're not learning, you have chosen to be irrelevant in three to five years. We have to learn to adapt. I think we, in this room, along with the administrators that have come in and talked to us about evaluations earlier tonight, and we'll, we'll continue that on, we are the leadership team of Fayette County School Corporation. I think an effective leadership team needs to focus on the learning piece. Roland Barth says, "If we are really committed to developing communities of learning, we must promote learning and a lifetime love of learning." How do we instill that in our students? How is it, you know, it's not drill and skill, it's not about rote, it's about developing that love of learning. How do we accomplish it? That, ladies and gentlemen, is our challenge. I finish that by saying, be a learner for life. I will tell you that I think the, the health and strength of Fayette County, Fayette County School Corporation is very strong. We aren't perfect, we are making good gains, we are, if it weren't for the state and the problems that they were having and the changes that they're, they're forcing upon us without adequate preparation time. That's the big key on that. Our folks will adapt, we'll get there, but we just didn't really have, have an opportunity to, to provide training for our folks and, and changes for, for our students. This is a great place to be, it's an absolute privilege and honor to be the superintendent. And I'll turn it over to you for questions that you might have of anything that I presented to you this evening.
Like I said, Dr. Barth, it's a great report. Thank you for taking the time to put it all together and making your presentation.
My pleasure.
If I had a question or concern about anything? I guess you did so well.
Put everybody to sleep.
Okay, that ends our discussion items, and we are at this point ready to move into public comments. That's where we, any person wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. This is a time when we listen to what you have to say. We do follow our board policy number one, 19, and it says that a maximum of five minutes may be allowed for each presentation and a maximum of 20 for a given agenda item. Under most circumstances, the board shall take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to the superintendent, assign the matter to a study committee, or remain silent on the matter. So tonight, I know that some of you are here maybe to discuss, and most of us have received emails concerning people that are concerned about what's going on at Alcuina. Some of the things that have perhaps come to us, we've already taken care of, but I asked Dr. Hodges to review for you what has happened regarding that issue. So I'll turn this over to Dr. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board, as, as I've shared with you, that after the decision was made to close Orange and Alcuina schools, there was a period of waiting that we had before we could really dispose of the property. But during that time, I was contacted by someone who had expressed interest in the Orange property. He was a visually impaired person. He had been through some training. He thought that that property might be a good place for him to provide some training for, for handicapped adults. And so we, we went through and we talked about that, we gave him some cost, and I think after he reviewed and saw what it was going to, to take to maintain that building, he lost interest in that. I also was approached by two men who were talking about having a partner, business partnership, expanding one business that they had. They wanted to grow mushrooms, other organic vegetables. The land out at Alcuina would limit stuff quite nicely for raising the type of livestock that they wanted to use. They would put in a meat-producing department within, within the gym. Everything seemed to, to fit pretty nice for what they had in mind to do, do that. They asked for some additional information, I gave them additional information, and during that time period, their partnership kind of dissolved and neither one was, was interested in that, that facility any longer. I talked to Steve Alexander, he's the gentleman that is heading up the remodeling of the six-story building, the pattern shop there in the old industrial park. I took him out and showed him Alcuina to ask if that was a building that he might have interest in rehabbing. And we talked a lot about that on the way out, he took a number of pictures. We then went out to the Orange property, that did not have near the interest to him. In fact, he didn't even get out of the van. We moved on. Before we had a public hearing, before we did anything more, I called him and asked him if he had interest in doing anything in that facility. And the way he finances his projects, he said there was not financing available to, to move forward with, with that project. So at this time, he has no interest in that. As you recall, at a regularly scheduled board meeting, we announced and we advertised in the paper that we would hold a public hearing on September the 2nd, 2015, in the Connersville Middle School Auditorium. The Board of School Trustees was interested in hearing suggestions and proposals as to what the community would like to see done with those buildings in Alcuina and Orange. As you know, we were, we were ready to listen to any and all comers. During that time period, we had three ideas that were presented. One was for a boot camp type operation for troubled youth that could be housed at Alcuina. One was to open a restaurant in the Alcuina building, and the other was to turn the Orange building into an assistant-type living facility. Talking with finance committee, we thought it would be advisable to ask anyone who had serious interest in that to submit a business plan that we could review. And we had a timeline, and the time came and passed, and no one filed a business plan with us. Since the board had received no business plans, no proposals, nothing for anyone to go forward, during the December 8th, 2015 board meeting, the board did grant permission to advertise for proposals to tear the buildings down in Orange and Alcuina. Currently, the bids are due February the 18th. There is a provision within that, that we're asking the contractor to hold their price for, for up to 90 days. We don't know if we're going to get one proposal or 15 proposals, we don't know until we get that. But that's where we stand at the current time. Is that what you?
Yes. I wanted just, as I said, a brief summary of what has happened and whatever. So with that, do we have an audience, anyone who would like to speak? If so, would you please come to the mic and identify yourself?
Sure. I'd like to just say a little bit. My name's Tim Bentley, and I do appreciate that presentation, Dr. Hodges. I didn't come here to be informed like that. I lived, I live statistics daily in my job, so, but that was a, a nice presentation and I do appreciate that knowledge and that information. I am a Fayette County resident, lived here my whole life, came up through school here. I'm a Connersville graduate, a Connersville area vocational school graduate. I believe this school, this school corporation has gotten me where I'm at today. I'm currently the manager of supplier development. I manage about 300 suppliers and a, a factory that employs about 1,200 employees in Eaton, Ohio. And, and you know, I know that you've talked about this being the largest employer, and I would love to see it get better, and I think a big intricate part of that is education, is our is our schools. And I think, you know, I went to Everton, I'm a Bearcat, I guess, if you will. My kids went to Alcuina, and I guess that's one of the reasons I'm kind of passionate about that. I have talked to one of the gentlemen that was interested in the Orange building about the assistant living. I know he mentioned that the requirements that the school board had put on that was very cumbersome, as far as escrows and some things like that. And I don't know all the details, but he kind of threw in the towel because of that. I don't know the answer, and I don't want to bore you guys, but I guess, and again, I work in Ohio, I work 50, 60 hours a week, I drive an hour each way. I don't get the newspaper, there's not a whole lot in it, sorry, but there just isn't. You know, I know you guys advertised on the radio, I don't listen to that radio station. You know, it doesn't pick up between here and Eaton, Ohio. I think you guys advertised one other means, didn't you? Three different ways? I forget what the other one was.
Cable TV.
Yeah, cable TV. A lot of people don't get cable TV. So maybe I'm unique, and I'm the only person that has my head in the sand, but I don't think that's true. I've talked to a lot of people in the last few weeks, and a lot of people said, "Hey, I didn't know that was happening." And I know Brayton Johns has been very adamant about the Alcuina building. Him and my daughter went to school there together, they graduated both last year. And I guess it's easy to kind of sit back on the back row and say, "Well, I'll let somebody else take care of that." And I think that's kind of what I did. I thought, "Well, you know Brayton's doing a nice job pushing this," and, you know, he's down in Tennessee now studying to get an education. His intent's to come back to Fayette County, I believe, to reside here and be a part of our community. And I guess my request to the board is, is it possible to maybe respur up some ideals about what can be done with these buildings? You know, there's some costs in tearing them down. We've already talked about money constraints. Currently, they're not on the tax roll because they're educational facilities. If we sold them, they'd go back on the tax roll, which is what you guys just talked about, is that our tax revenue is decreasing. And, you know, I'm not saying that we just go out and let whoever wants to give us a dollar bid to make the transaction legal to have it, that's not what I'm suggesting. But what I'm suggesting is, is the board willing to maybe revisit this, throw out some, maybe some forums where the public can come together and decide what can these buildings be used for? I had one gentleman tell me that Alcuina's had a school there, not the building that's there now, but they've had a school there since 1888. That's a long time to just bulldoze and to say, "Hey, we don't, you know, we're forgetting about that educational impact that plot of land had." He also mentioned to me, and I didn't know this, but he said, "There was a time capsule that was buried out there, that Ben Gettinger had buried on that property years ago." One of his questions was, "What's going to happen with that?" So there's a lot of questions, and again, I know the school did their diligence in advertising, but for a guy like me, and I think a lot of us here that live in the city and the county, a lot of us, you just mentioned you're the largest employer, so there's about 23,000 people that live in Fayette County, 800 people is employed here. Where's those other 20-some-thousand people work? I know some of them's retired, some of them's kids, but a lot of us are driving out of town. A lot of us are working 60 hours a week, coming home, and yeah, maybe we do have our heads stuck in the sand, but we didn't know where this process was at. So I guess my request to the board is, "Hey, let's maybe get some more public feedback. Let's let the public maybe invest in some interest of what we might do with these buildings." So, and I won't bore you guys, again, I'll wrap it up, but I never had any desire to get involved with saving these schools, if you will, but I do believe there may be some value there to try to do something. And do I have the answer? No. But I'd like to maybe partner with some other people and say, "Hey, let's see what we can do with these buildings." And I know it's easy to say, you know, "Hey, we can think back to Waterloo, you drive by it, it's an eyesore." And I get that. But, you know, it's, and again, I don't have the answer. And I'll close with this, one of the reasons why that I'm still here fighting for these schools that's rundown, and I drove by them the other day, and, you know, it was kind of sad, because I've got pictures at home with my kids each walking up the steps of that school when they went to kindergarten, went out there, windows are knocked out and different things. But one of the reasons that I'm still here fighting for a couple of schools that's fallen down is because Connersville's my home, this is where I went to school at, this is where I want to invest my time and energy into. My employer would love more than anything to move me to Eaton, Ohio. They've offered to do that. They've offered to give me moving expenses to move me here, but I still see hope in Connersville and Fayette County School Corporations and in the youth that we've got here. So can we use those buildings for something? I don't know. But I'm asking for you guys to, let's reconsider dozing these buildings down, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate you being here. Did anyone else want to speak? Gar.
I just had, I'm Brayton Johns, I'm bringing this down. I just had a couple of questions. One, you're looking at tearing them down, I was just curious why that is an option. Two, did tear it down, what were you going to look at doing with the land, once it's torn down? And three, maybe what the impact of the gyms to two locations would be for the public? You know, if you did look at tearing it down, would you maybe save the gym? Because I know there's always people that are wanting to play basketball, volleyball, or something like that. That's really all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Dr. Hodges, you have a statement maybe about that.
Well, as I said, board, the bids that are out there were asking for them to hold their price for 90 days. We had hoped to be able to present bids to you. Before this, we were trying to hit a window, and maybe they weren't quite so busy, thinking we'd get more favorable pricing for that. Realistically, if we opened bids on the 18th of February, we wouldn't be in a position to ask for an award of that before our March meeting. So there's a window, you've made no decision, you've just authorized to go out. As I have, you heard me say another thing, just go fishing to see what's out there. But you have to make the decision whether or not you would approve the cost of tearing those buildings down. To this point, while there's been a lot of conversation of you might, you could, we've not had anybody come forward saying, "I will." And so that's your choice. But there could be, if you want to direct us or hold things for a while, the natural timeline that we have is we're not ready to do something tonight. Does that make sense? So we serve at the pleasure of the board, it's always what your pleasure is, and we'll do our best to do that.
I think we would be, and I represent the Alcuina district, and I had a wonderful conversation with the younger, Mr. Johns. I think out of respect for the community and the things that Tim has talked about, people living out of town, and we can advertise all we want, but we don't pay attention to it, I'm sorry. A lot of it just flies over our head. But I think this coming out and the possibility of it being demolished has renewed interest in saving this. And our timeline can be, it might cost us a little bit more money on the long run if we, you know, if we decide to demolish, but I think in fairness to those people who are very passionate about it, that if we could postpone that kind of decision for 90 days and say, "Okay, community, this is, you know, you've said you don't want us to do this, our hands are going to be tied pretty soon, because we do need to do something with this property. See what you can come up with within the next 90 days or so to work with us, and we'll work with you to try to resolve this situation in a way that is much more amenable to everyone." The people of Alcuina are very passionate about their school, I get that. But now it's time, okay, passion is one thing, action is another. Let's see if we can get people organized to come up with a viable plan to save those buildings, or save the building at Alcuina, or at Orange, or both. Sounds like you just needed a little bit more time. I think the reality that that building was not going to be there anymore hit everybody. And that's not a pleasant thing when you've watched your kids go up there to kindergarten. So my suggestion would be to delay our timeline a little bit and give the people of the community a little bit more time to get themselves organized and present a plan to us, perhaps a plan that would be viable for all parties involved. They have to have a timeline. I mean, we can't let this go on forever, but giving you a little extended time would be my suggestion at this particular point in time.
I will agree with Ann basically saying that when we, you know, closed the schools, we didn't just make a quick decision on that, we did a lot of thinking, whatever. And my hope was that people of the community could use them, but at the same time, we don't want those to become an eyesore to those communities. We felt that we gave the best we could, you know, in advertising all these, you know, whatever means. I don't know what else we could have done. But if you guys think that you can come up with something that is lasting, you know, and that would use the building, keep it nice, I know that Columbia, they use their building for funeral dinners and other activities, but it, you know, it's going to fall on you because we need to get rid of it from the school corporation because of the cost that it is or can be. So my feeling is, if you want some extra time during this that Dr. Hodges talked about, I have no problem with it. But we, as the school corporation, I feel that we've done all that we can do at this point. So we were down to this option. What else was there left for us to do? Anyone else want to speak? So what kind of direction do we want to give our administration?
I would ask that we would delay any letting the bids for demolition for a period of 60 to, well, make it 90 days. It might cost us more in the long run, but it would give the people in the Alcuina community who are now most interested in keeping the viable alternative, a new impetus, and give them 90 days to come up with something and see how that goes. The buildings will still be there. Might cost us a little bit more, but I think for the good of the community, I think it would be a good thing to give the people of Alcuina in particular the time to, this is the final countdown, we really need to get something done, and the ball is now in your court. If you want something to do, then use your resources, get yourselves organized, and try to find a way. And if you can find a way, we will agree with it, if it's at all viable as far as we're concerned.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is it possible to get the guidelines that the board is asking for for the purchase of these buildings? I think that's a key part of this, is what guidelines is required, and then certainly I think we'd go to work and try to get some plan together, some useful solution maybe as an alternative to demolition.
Dr. Hodges, where would those...
Well, let me ask you this, this way, I mean, we've worked, and I apologize, through this, I've worked some with the executive committee and the finance committee, and I don't remember which one approved the business plans that we put together, but I think it would make the most sense to get that committee back together again and have conversation, because we talked about a lot of the issues that were brought up tonight. I will tell you that in having conversations with community members when we were going through the closure conversation, what was going to happen with those buildings, did talk about the Columbia building, did talk about, would there be a way that we look at, especially the Orange building, the way it's laid out, there might be a way that we might be able to demo part of that building, say the kitchen cafeteria for community use, and the people that I talked to said there's nobody in this community that'd be able to generate the kind of dollars to be able to keep that open. That's conversation with people, but that was the feedback that we got. I don't think the heating system, the way it's laid out at Alcuina lent itself quite the same way.
The cafeteria is not... Pardon? The heating, if you recall, two years ago, when they had that propane shortage, we had to disconnect that heating at both of those locations. So that would be really expensive for someone to try and restore that, if it would be possible.
To move this along, if it pleased the board, I'll go back and see whether it was the Finance Committee or Executive Committee that I talked to, we'll meet with them, see what we can draw. I don't know what to do advertising-wise, I mean, as we said, radio, TV3, the newspaper, it's posted out here on the board out here, it's on our website. I'm not sure what else we do as far as advertising, those kinds of things. Word of mouth works pretty well. I think with those communities, most people seem to know what was happening. We had more spectators than we had people who actually talked, so I know it was out in the community what we were doing, but I'd be happy to take your recommendation on what we do differently and maybe better on that. But I think that, to get off dead center tonight, I think that's probably the logical next step.
Regarding sale of the property, I'm just testing my memory, and I'm more of a morning person than an evening, but I do believe if the board were contemplating selling the property, you have to have two independent appraisals from individuals who are licensed to provide that service within the state of Indiana. So you would have an expense there. I do remember the conversations, I think, with the Executive Committee. There's a lot of concern about people wanting the buildings and then not able to maintain those buildings and the properties, and they continue, you know, they're a school building and they look like a school building. And that's part of why the business proposal request was what made, some would seem over the top, as you said, but it was to make sure that people had really vetted the process for using those buildings for another type of business or arrangement, to make sure it wasn't, "Oh, yeah, we want to buy that building," and then they're not able to get their business off the ground or whatever. Those types of things that were included in the business proposal would be what they had to work with a bang for to get the lending for that. So that's just...
And we had gotten, Fayette County School Corporation had gotten burned on that with the Waterloo building, because the Waterloo building was sold to somebody else, and there was a concern that was in there for a while, and then they just left and left the building to rack and ruin.
And it looks like, it still looks like a school building, it's still reflected on the school.
But it was purchased, and there was a facility out there for a number of years, and then that person pulled out, and now it's very...
That's part of the committee's concern.
Yeah. We don't want that to happen again.
I'm going to add to that. Tim, you like working, have you gone through Boston on the way to work?
Yes, yes. Occasionally, I do go that way, yeah.
Do you understand what I'm addressing, the school building that's there?
Yeah, I get what you guys are saying, but, and the Waterloo building is an eyesore, so that's one building. But Dr. Hodges even mentioned the Columbia building has been a success, so, yeah, we can look at the Waterloo building as a failure, Columbia's a success, so we've got a 50/50 shot here. I'm saying give the public a chance.
Well, we also have the Milton Building.
True.
And we also have the building in Cambridge City. If you drive to Port Wayne, there's at least three buildings that are derelict. If you drive to Indianapolis, I can think of two that are derelict. If you want to go down on 244, again, I can think of two buildings down there that are derelict. All we want is assurance or proof that we don't end up adding injury to these communities by allowing somebody to go in there and fail. That would be the worst possible thing we could do to Alcuina. That would be the worst possible thing we could do to Alcuina and Orange. I went to school at Alcuina. I loved the place. I wasn't happy with the clothes and myself, but I'm at the end of my rope. You know, it's, I'm dealing with it and I'm ready to move on. You know, if the Board wants to give you another 90 days, then fine, take another 90 days. But it's going to have to be something, at least for me to support it, that doesn't allow those buildings to become eyesores to those two communities because those two communities do not deserve that. Like they've got the Waterloo and all the other places that I mentioned. That's all I had to say about it.
Warren, do you think there's value in the gyms? Let's say we came back and said, "Yeah, you're right, the building's too big, the heating's too much," but gym, there's value there.
The problem is to find the resources to support it. I've talked to the trustee at Orange, and his answer is, "No, we can't support it." And I haven't talked to anybody at Alcuina, but my guess is, and again, that building doesn't lend itself well to tearing part of the structure down and just leaving the gym. What would be there to support that and assure that that would be a viable structure and use for Alcuina as far as you can see into the future?
The mowing of both of those properties is fairly expensive.
Well, there's a lot of expenses other than just the structures. And that's the problem, is the communities don't have the resources to support them.
Wouldn't the mowing still be there even if you demoed the buildings?
The thinking is, at least as far as I can see, is that the land would be given back to the townships. And it would be, it could be in the form of a park or a monument or, you know, whatever the community wanted, however the community wanted to have it.
So is that decision set in stone?
No, no, nothing is in stone.
Because I guess that's probably more what the public would like to know. What is the requirements to purchase the buildings? And if they are torn down, what would be the intent, the end use of the land? You know, Alcuina may be, the people may say, "Hey, we can't afford it," but if they give us the land back, some of the residents may say, "Hey, we'll kick in and let's build some picnic shelters and let's put some playground equipment back." We just, we need to be, I guess, educated as to what the options are.
Yeah, that would be an option that, at least, and I'm not speaking for the whole Board, that would be an option that I could support. I don't want to hurt the community in any way, and it's hurt.
And I totally, I get the position you guys are in. I get people that still want to hang on, that has memories of those schools, and it sounds like you do as well, you know. And that's all I'm asking, is what options are out there? It may not be feasible, like Dr. Hodges mentioned, maybe the cost is too high for these communities to absorb that kind of structure. But maybe they're more willing to let go of it if the Board would do what maybe you indicated in letting the land go back. Maybe you keep the bell tower standing at Alcuina, and then maybe there is a park created there or something. You know, I think that could be a good win-win with the school board and the community. So I guess that's my only request, and I think that those that I've talked to, that's kind of what everybody is kind of hoping, is to be informed and let's discuss rationally what works out best with the school board and the community. And like I said, I never expected to get on this bandwagon, but I see value in these buildings. I see a lot of buildings falling down in our community. I see numbers declining in enrollment here and jobs. We've got to turn that around. You know, I don't want to move out of Connersville's home. I think Brayton wants to come back to Connersville's home. I've got a daughter in college right now. I'm hoping she wants to come back home, but there's got to be things here for them to come back to. I won't say, I won't prolong the meeting. That's all I can say or something.
You're fine.
Just one thing, there again, we, the committee that looked at this talked about what do we do after, but until we do, it seemed to be a little bit premature. When do you get the cart before the horse? I will tell you that from day one, when we started talking about closing Alcuina, the bell tower has been a concern, and we've always made the commitment that we will try to find the appropriate place for that. If we sold the property, that's up to the property owners. I know the gentleman that I talked to about purchasing the property for the produce that I talked about, they said they didn't have any problem with keeping that bell tower there. They'd be happy to do that. I've been told there's some other people who would be happy to have that located on their property. They'd even help to move it. We haven't gotten there yet, but until we make a decision, the Board makes a decision what they're going to do, some of this other stuff is premature. The committee has talked about giving property back to the townships. The Board hasn't approved that. I don't know if the townships could afford the, I mean, that may be if they don't want. I don't know the answer to that. But lack of anyone stepping forward and saying, "Here's what we're going to do. Here's the plan going forward." The Board had no options but to go the direction that they want. So that's where we are, I think, Mr. Burchett has.
I just, we need to do something. We talked about this, we all long enough, we know, you know, the problem on both sides. I'm just saying, I'm going to make a suggestion that we have this 90-day period of time, right? That if you guys come up with something that's, you know, that meets the business plan that Talat has told you about, I think we, as a school board, have done all we're going to do. This is, you know, we've come to this point. You know, at this end of time, then we're ready to move with demolition unless you guys come up with something different that we feel is appropriate. How the rest of you feel about that?
I agree.
I agree.
Just so we have perfect clarity, specifications have been released, contractors are aware and they know that we have a deadline already established for February the 18th. That's already done. Because there was one comment that maybe we could wait on letting that. It's already out there. The awarding of that can be done at a different time. Just clear that up.
I think we could go ahead and award that or use that time, but we're hearing that there's a period of time where you really can't do anything, right? Which amounts to about 90 days.
We've, no.
No?
The way it is right at the moment, if we were to choose to have a special Board meeting on the 19th of February, we could award a bit or award a contract to somebody to tear the building down starting on the 19th and starting on the 20th, give or take a few days. That's really where we're at. What we're asking them to do is to make sure, because we don't have a Board meeting scheduled that quickly, we're asking them to hold that price for a period of time up to 90 days. That's where we're at right now. We could, if you would direct us to, tell them to just forget that, we'll re-advertise it later. There's a lot of options. I would feel most comfortable, I think, in getting back together with the committee and working out these details. It sounds like it's a consensus of the Board. You'd like to see if there's a way to provide people some additional time to do that. They're asking what are the expectations. I want to review the expectations with the committee, make sure we're still on the same page. I will tell you that if we were selling this to the city or another governmental entity, there's one set of laws that deal with that. And as Janie indicated, if we're selling that to a private individual, private party, there's another set of laws so that we just, I don't know. And I had this more at my fingertips back before the public hearing, it's working with our school attorney. I do not believe if somebody walked in and says, "I want to buy that for a dollar," I don't think you can sell it to them for a dollar.
No.
You can sell it to another governmental entity, and I'm not sure. There are appraisals and other things, so it's a little bit more complicated. Not anything that can't be done, it just takes a little bit of time to work that out. But I agree, we've got to have somebody saying, "This is what we want to do, and this is how we're going to finance it and make it happen." That was the direction I had from the committee conversation that we had.
Yeah, well, let's get the committee together and move on and move on tonight.
Okay, so is that the conclusion then? We're going to get our committee together again? Is that what you're saying? Our committee?
Well, that's a recommendation from the superintendent.
Okay. I just want everybody clear.
We'll make that happen. And I apologize, Janie and I get together and we'll figure out which committee I need to be with to look at that schedule.
I believe it's the Executive Committee, so I don't know if one of you's saying, "No." It worked before because that might have changed.
We'll figure it out.
And then the information from that committee would be passed along to the appropriate people in the community who would be interested in pursuing it?
Well, we'll talk about it and do the best we can.
Okay.
I thought we communicated the way that we needed to communicate, and obviously tonight there's a difference of opinion. So to say we communicated with all the appropriate people, I'm not sure I know how to handle it.
Okay.
So in other words, three months down the road, there could be a new group of people saying they didn't know anything about it.
Somebody say, "I didn't know."
Right, right.
We'll work on it.
Yeah, we'll get it.
That's a commitment.
We'll do it.
Okay, that, correct my agenda here, that ends our public comments. So we'll move then into report items. Do we have superintendent's discussion groups report? Seeing none, principal director reports? Yes, sir.
Mr. Page. Thanks, Mr. President, Board, Dr. Hodges, members of the Cabinet. This is an item of celebration. On January 27th, Everton's science team participated in the statewide online competition, and Everton's science team came in third in the state. In fact, in their class, and only three points away from first place. So...
Those are the kind of reports we like. Director Personnel report.
Just two quick items, Mr. Burchett. Jane had to leave. He's yearning for the watching the weather, and she'll be getting up in just a few hours. But I do want to congratulate her and her mechanics team, Almore, Eric Moore, and Joe Bunyer. They started their first of five inspections on buses by the state police, which they've done every year, and they received 100% passing. Every bus on the road was inspected. And what's really interesting about that and unique about that, every one of those buses were on the road running morning routes, and they still passed inspection. That's pretty tough to do. So those guys and gals did a great job over there, so congratulations to that group. Then the other, just to make you aware of it, our pre-bid meeting for those interested in providing services, food service management, is, will be held tomorrow. So the vendors will show up here, they'll receive a tour of a couple, three of our schools, and then there are bids or proposals we do the 24th that will be open. And then we'll be providing some additional information to you at the March Board meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Director of Finance report.
I have nothing additional.
Assistant Superintendent's report.
I have anything, please.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
I think I talked to him.
Okay, any Board members for good of the cause?
Mark, February 25th on your calendars at the Spartan Bowl at 5:30. It's the fifth annual Guys vs. Gals eighth grade basketball game for the benefit of the Lord's Kitchen. It's going to be a lot of fun. We raised over $2,000 last year for the Lord's Kitchen, and everybody had a great time. We have some special celebrity guests, and everyone in the school was really looking forward to it. It's a good time. Free will donation totally to get in, and it's really, really a lot of fun. That is Thursday, February 25th, 5:30 at the Spartan Bowl.
Thank you. Anyone else with that? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, except we continue our...